The views and opinions in this program are not those of CISA VII or Spectrum.
I'd like to call the regular board meeting to order, and we will start with roll call. Beth, if you could help us with that.
Great. Becker?
Here.
McCoy?
Here.
Shelton?
Here.
Sit Nakow?
Here.
Smith?
Here.
Brandon Hoover?
Here.
And Warren.
All seven board members are present. We will go to the pledge of allegiance. For the pledge, I'd ask for everyone to mute themselves. You can recite the pledge at home. I will say the pledge together. Here we go. "I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all." Much better. All right, moving on, having our mission statement. Rhonda, would you be able to read our mission statement? Do you have the agenda up? Sorry, I didn't get to text you ahead of time.
I have the agenda up. Hold on. I always look at it on my phone.
Oh, okay.
"We educate all students to be college, career, and community-ready, inspired to succeed in our diverse world."
Thank you very much. And then we will move on to our collaborative commitments. I will call on board members to read statements that we agreed upon last summer in terms of how we're going to operate. And I will start with Laura McCoy. If you could read number one, please.
Number one, "We will strive to review board materials and seek clarifying information before board meetings."
I will read number two. "We will embrace diverse views and perspectives as a path to effective solutions." Christina, could you read number three?
You know, I can't read number three because my internet's being weird. Can somebody read it for me? I'm sorry, I'm having a hard time pulling up the agenda.
Yeah, no problem. I can read number three. "We will show consideration to everyone, fellow school board members, staff, students, families, and community members in our speech and behavior." Brenda, could you read number four? Brenda, we can't hear you. You were off mute, but... Yeah, still can't hear you. All right, Dawn, we go on to you. We'll see if Brenda gets it fixed by the time we get to seven. Can you read number four for us?
Yep. "We will consider the merits of ideas as the primary driver of our decisions."
You, Rhonda, can you read number five?
"We will offer our comments efficiently and succinctly and avoid repetition in order to keep board meetings to a reasonable length."
Andrew, number six?
"We will create equitable and inclusive opportunities to promote community engagement."
Brenda, do you think you got it fixed? No.
That's very faint.
We heard you like very faintly. Okay, well, I'll read number seven. Okay, we'll go on without your number seven. "As we will engage in conversations in a way that allows for all perspectives to be shared, considered, and valued." All right, that takes us on to open forum. And I believe we have two people who are registered to speak. One person submitted comments that they would like to have someone else read, and I understand that Lori Blakesley is going to read those for us.
Yes, I am. Can you hear me?
Yep.
All right. Tracy Conop, 2799 Elaway Avenue, Green Bay. "I am concerned about the idea of reopening schools. I am referring to bringing the students and staff back into the buildings full-time or hybrid. When I hear people say, 'We need schools to reopen,' I hear them describe wanting to return to the way things were before March 13th. That is not possible to do safely at this time. Teaching is so much more than delivering instruction to students in a room. That is all that is safe to do right now. It is not safe for a teacher or other staff member to come sit by your child and offer the individual assistance they did before. They cannot give high fives or encouraging pats on the back. They cannot wipe the tears of elementary students or help to break up fights between middle or high school students. Even if we could design the perfect classroom environment with physical distancing, unlimited cleaning supplies, and time to clean, how do we get the kids into these rooms safely? Twelve on a bus won't be possible, so the alternative is what? To not follow the suggestion because it is not feasible? When the students arrive to school, how do we keep them from congregating in crowded hallways and to go directly to their assigned classroom and not enter another to socialize with a friend? All of this has to be considered when we think about reopening schools. Please offer virtual learning only for 2020-21, at least for the first semester, then reevaluate. I fear that if we reopen, we will eventually end up needing to go to virtual learning again when we can get positive cases and sick staff that cannot come to work. There was a sub shortage before this pandemic where all our... Where are all of the needed subs going to come from? If we make this decision now, parents have more time to talk to their employers or make plans for childcare if needed, and teachers can know what to start planning for and start working on quality online lessons. Right now, teachers are not sure what to plan for or how to plan. Parents just want to know what the plan is. No plan is going to make everyone happy. So instead of trying to make people happy, let's worry about keeping them safe. The safest option of the three options you are considering is the all-virtual model."
Thank you for reading that for us, Lori, and thank you, Ms. Conop, for sharing that feedback. The next person is someone who would like to call in. Josh, you work on that for us?
Yep, dial in right now. Call has been accepted.
Justin, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Thank you so much for calling in. If you could start by introducing yourself and giving us your address, and then you have five minutes to address the board.
Sounds good. Justin Delphos, 260 Fairway Drive, Luxembourg, 54217. "Good evening. I have been a special education teacher at Green Bay West High School since 2002, and I currently serve as the president of the Green Bay Education Association, representing approximately 1,400 teachers and peer professionals. I'm going to begin by recognizing all of the work being done behind the scenes by Superintendent Merly, Deputy Superintendent Byer, and their leadership team. In a short time in our district, we are impressed with Superintendent Merly's leadership and are confident that the board made a wise choice for our district. His experience and willingness to listen to educators is necessary in the current situation that we face. The dedication and hard work that I have seen over the last couple of weeks has been truly remarkable. I also know that our members greatly appreciate the district leadership's commitment to including educator voice in planning for the unprecedented school year to come. I also would like to acknowledge the difficult position that we all have been in, that we have all been put in this year. And I say "we" because we, the GBEA, the district, and the Board of Ed are in this together, and the GBEA commits to continue working together with you in all circumstances. Due to a lack of leadership in our government, this pandemic has altered life as we know it, and we're left to come up with an educational plan that we all know will never make everyone happy. I'm reminded of a recent meme I saw that stated, 'If school starts normally, people will be angry. If school starts with distance learning, people will be angry. If school starts with the combination of both, people will be angry.' Our members truly want nothing more than to be with their students on September 1st if it is safe to do so. We want to be able to accept a hug from a little one that needs it without worry about their safety and our own. We want to be able to give that high five, fist bump, or pat on the back, but we also want to guarantee a science-informed, safe and equitable school reopening, not a reopening based on pressure from politicians who have repeatedly denied science and have no idea what is best for educators and their students. Earlier today, you may have seen a joint statement from the GBEA, the Milwaukee Teachers Education Association, the Madison Teachers Incorporated, the Racine Education Association, and the Kenosha Education Association. In this statement, we mentioned that if there is not effective containment of COVID-19 cases in our area, a virtual reopening of our schools is necessary. This is not a hard-line demand for a virtual reopening. If on September 1st, cases are under control and the science says it is safe to do so, we want to be back with our students. I want to assure students, parents, and the community that no matter what decision is made, our educators will be ready to provide the best possible instruction, whether it is distance learning, in-person, or a combination. Thank you."
Thank you very much, Justin, for sharing those comments with the board.
I have a clarifying question for Justin.
Yep, go ahead.
Is he still on the line?
Yep, Justin, he's still there?
Yep, I'm here.
Okay. Thanks, Justin. You mentioned effective containment. Can you elaborate more on what that actually looks like? Any numbers for us at all?
No, I do not have specific numbers. I mean, I would really have to... You know, I think that would have to be more a scientific or the medical community. I do know with where the cases are at right now and how they've continued to rise, that the anxiety of our educators has increased on a day-to-day basis. I've heard from a lot of people that if they were to retake the district survey today, they would answer a lot differently than they did a couple of weeks ago because of the rising number of cases all across Wisconsin.
Thank you.
Yep.
All right, Justin, thank you again for your statement tonight. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Have a good meeting. Bye.
Thanks. All right, before we jump into the superintendent's report, I want to jump back. I forgot to announce who was all in our meeting. In addition to all seven board members, we're joined by Superintendent Steve Merly, along with members of his cabinet. And then we're also joined by two members of the intercity student council, former President Luke Pizzani and Acting President Noah Becker are with us on the call today. All right, with that said, I will hand it over to Superintendent Merly for his superintendent updates.
So I just wanted to start the conversation by letting you know that the team is hard at work. I'd like to express appreciation for the 30 members of the leadership team who spent all day today on a Zoom call, which can be very tiring, but working together collectively and then in smaller breakout groups. And we are still following the plan of hope for the best, plan for the worst. And so they worked diligently the last two weeks on the plan for what it would look like if we find ourselves on March 13th again. And all of our students are learning offsite. But we also recognize that we hope there's some light at the end of the tunnel and that at some point here in the not-too-distant future, we're going to have students back in school. We do recognize that kids back in school doesn't look like it did on March 12th. And so part of what we're doing is trying to make sure that we are planning for both the learning environment and for the operational components that support that return to learn with students present in the school. To that end, I know at the last meeting, questions were raised by board directors about issues surrounding transportation and nutrition services. Those happen to be two areas that have been out front in our planning process and are a little bit further along. And so we thought it germane at this time to invite Chad and Lynette in to share an update with you about work that they're doing in those two areas in particular. So we're going to ask them to share that update with you. When they're done with that, I'm going to give you a little bit more information on things to expect in the next few weeks, both in terms of our planning process and in terms of our report out to you and then our expectations about where you can provide assistance to us as an administrative team and a school community. So with that, I'm going to turn it over, I believe, Pete, just for a couple of introductory comments, and then he will hand it off to Lynette and Chad. Pete?
Thank you, Mr. Merly. We've been working with, actually, all the way since March with the governor's closure of schools with a group of Brown County superintendents, and we've been hashing out a number of issues with respect to the COVID closure as well as what the fall restart looks like. One of the tasks that was assigned to me was to have work done on transportation and food service since I know that we've had very good directors in both of those programs and that they've been thinking in utilizing their time and their talents to put together plans going forward for the beginning of the school year and what that might look like. I volunteered to have them present to the Brown County superintendents, which they did. And so then their presentation would be similar to what they did during that. And I believe that they are providing guidance for the entire region with respect to how it is that we can start talking about what school looks like in the fall. So I'm not sure who wants to go first. Chad is our new transportation director. Maybe he could start off, and then we'll follow with Lynette.
Pete? Thank you for that, and good evening, everyone. And I'm happy to be here, and thanks for the opportunity to have me speak tonight. We've got a slide with a few pieces of information I'd just like to share just to bring everybody up to speed. Been working with a number of different groups, with the leadership group, along with the bus carriers. And to get into this, the CDC guidelines are that there's 12 students on a 72-passenger bus or 14 passengers on an 84-passenger bus. What we're hearing from the carriers, this isn't a workable, sustainable plan for us. There's just not enough equipment, not enough drivers to accomplish getting kids to school while practicing a social distancing process. So what the carriers are recommending and are bringing forward is a 50% rider capacity, no less than that. Basically, that's like one to a seat. And if there's family members, they certainly could sit on the same seat with the one student, so they could have a couple of students on one seat. We do have coming out some recommendations for masking. All drivers would wear masks when children are on the bus. One thing we're doing is we're working on looking at the different mask types that are available to provide options that don't fog up for those drivers, like myself, that have glasses. So certainly, that's a safety accommodation that we're looking at to ensure that we're safe out there. We try to use some educational efforts and have children wear masks. It's a highly recommended thing to do while they're on the bus for safe travel. In that regards, we'd be asking parents for help in the teaching their children on the how to wear a mask and the importance of it. We're also looking at, as the plan, to use like a parent opt-out to ensure that we have a more accurate list of numbers of students so that we can put together a workable set for transport and know that we're within a workable range, as mentioned, with the lower capacity on the buses from years past. We also will let parents know that riding a bus does have some inherent risks associated, but we'll also be using mitigation strategies to help counter that. After each trip, bus cleaning will be done. The recommended cleaning with the contractors is wiping all the surfaces, having hand sanitizer stationed when you enter and exit that the student could use, students would use on that way. Currently, we've got the bus carriers and us looking at what potential scenarios could be coming and how we could work through some of those things as we prepare for the first day of school. We're working on what routing flexibility, special route needs that we encounter each year, and just how do we work through that in this era right now? Just like to mention that transportation is real flexible, and we're understanding that there's constantly changing issues with this. I also just want to mention that with the limited seating capacity on buses, that parent-paid contract requests are on hold. That's something that's been taken by this time each year, but because of where we're at, just wanted to make mention that's something we've got on hold. Is anybody that's what I have for an update today? Is there any comments or questions that anyone might have?
I can't see everybody, so if you have something to ask, just go ahead.
I have a question. Rhonda?
Yep.
Thanks a lot for that information. Would you be able to speak to, you said, the limited riders, parent-paid contracts, requests are on hold. At this time, are you aware of any parents that have actually paid any contracts? Have there been any fees collected at all?
As mentioned, I've just started with the district and getting up to speed for the 2021 school year. I'm not aware of any paid contracts up till this point.
Okay. And that's fair. I'd like to know about that if possible. I'm just hoping we can have that answer at some point. I'm also wondering about, regardless if we do a hybrid schedule, all-virtual schedule, if there have been fees paid, I'm interested to know if they will be returned. So that's something I'm looking for clarification on. Thank you.
Absolutely, Rhonda. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thanks, Chad.
Yep, thank you. Thank you.
As Pete said, Lynette is going to share an update next on the work that we've been doing with nutrition services.
Right, good evening, everyone. I want to say thank you for letting me come and put out our proposal to everyone. And we understand that this is some times that are uncharted for all of us. But I want to let everyone know that the food service department is able and willing to make changes. And we know that we need to be flexible for the plan that will be put in place with the district. Our main focus is staff and children. What we have in place is for breakfast and lunch, we are looking at serving 4K through second grade in the classrooms. We are currently doing that at some of our schools right now. We also have done that during our construction at our schools, and that has worked out very nicely. Hallway serving also within the grades of 3 through 6. And we are also looking at setting up models inside of the hallways that will work out very well also, and that has been practiced before within our department. Pickup meals in the cafeteria and also students eating in the classroom at our middle school and high school. And also with that, we could also look at setting up in the hallways also for the students. We are also looking at pickup breakfast when exiting the buses. We can practice social distancing coming off of the bus in those schools that we have CEP or also known as our community eligibility provision, that we could offer those meals to students and they could go right to the classroom, and that would work very nicely for those schools. The parent pickup meal locations for students who are at home. What that would look like is exactly what we're doing right now. We have seven trucks that are out on the road. Every truck is going to three different locations feeding, and it is going over wonderfully within our district. So that is something that we would continue, but it would look a little different. And how that would look different is we would be feeding at all of our schools for parent pickup. So our home delivery of meals for students at home, we are doing that currently right now also. We have volunteers that are within our community that email us every night what sites they're going to go to and the number of meals that we are going to be packaging for them to pick up. And that has worked out very, very nicely, too. We are still feeding the boys and girls clubs. What they are doing is they're coming and picking up the meals, and we would continue to do that depending on the plan that our district has that we would end up putting together. We do that for family services, and we would continue. And we are also doing that for the crop center, too. Serving meals that we're doing and we will continue to do will follow within the CDC guidelines. We are practicing our social and physical distancing, hand washing, and masks. And we do get some positive feedback from our community, and we also get feedback that can also help us get better every single day. And the food service staff are very open and willing to do that. What I want to share with you also, and it's on the slide, is I was invited to be on the WASBO committee. WASBO is the Wisconsin Association of Business Officers within the state of Wisconsin. And myself and other food service directors and business managers throughout Wisconsin are putting plans together for other districts so they have something to go to, and there's a model in place for them. So I feel very fortunate that I was asked to be on that team because that also helps with Green Bay. So thank you for letting me be able to talk with all of you tonight. And does anyone have any questions for me?
Lynette, I have a question. How do you determine, you said that we have a parent pickup meal locations. I understand how that works now versus the home delivery. How would that get determined, let's say, in September? How would parents have the option to either come to a site or we would deliver it? Or how would that determine, get determined?
With our home delivery, what we are doing right now and the volunteers that are working with us, are families that are unable to get to a location. There are families that they don't have any transportation. There was a time during, we did have city buses running, and so we needed to do that. There are families, their children are young, and vehicles is a concern. They don't know where to go. So this has been very positive for our district.
Yeah, thank you for sharing that. If a family was watching, or will there be communication on if they need help with this, on who to call and how to get that delivery option set up?
Yes, absolutely, there would be. And within, we are working very closely with the communications department within our district, and we are looking at revamping our food service website on the Green Bay app just because we want it to make it user-friendly again for our changing times right now. And we want to have all that information for the parents and guardians.
Thank you very much, Lynette. This is the first time I've seen you since the start of the pandemic, and you and your team have done tremendous amount of work to make sure kids in our community have continued to get fed for the last four or five months. So thank you for that.
You bet. Thank you.
Here, I have a question then. Oh, sorry.
Go ahead, Christina, and then we'll go to Rhonda.
Thank you.
Thank you. I have a couple of questions. Thank you, Lynette, for the update. I really appreciate your leadership on this. So if, if and when we get back in person, when we're thinking about these grab and go alternative meal models, we typically see universal free, right? Because these are opportunities for us to increase our meal participation. So do you see that happening?
I think, okay, what I can tell you is right now, I did submit a letter to the USDA Secretary Sonny, excuse me, Sonny Perdue. And I did ask if he would please take in consideration of that the summer, the seamless summer feeding option. Because what right now USDA wants to do is still do the national school lunch program and the breakfast program with the students. And with that being said, that would cost the families dollars. Now, as we have talked, I believe it was last school year, within our district, if we did do universal free, there is a huge financial impact to the program each month. And that is not something that the food service program could look in, could, how can I say that, could back it up or could keep this in a positive. But I will tell you that the School Nutrition Association, food service directors are writing letters and trying very, very hard to get these waivers and to make this happen. Because we also are looking at how this has impacted our families. And we are working on also with the communications department right now for the free and reduced application. With getting them as streamlined and very easy communication out to these families so they can, can work with them. And also for them to fill them out online. And also with Direct Cert that will be, be doing very shortly. There's going to be a huge impact with that too with meals.
Thank you for that. I have a follow up and I'm just trying to remember if this was the number. I think last year you told us that if we did want to do universal free, it was a mil, it would be at a million dollar cost to the district. Is that still kind of your estimate if we were to move in that? 1.8 million to go universal free? Okay.
Yes.
Thank you, Lynette.
You're welcome.
Rhonda, do you still have questions?
I do. Thank you. Lynette, so in the last several months, starting after March 13th, when the district shut down, schools shut down. And, and the district was, district was still providing meal, meals delivered and as well as pickup. The numbers were very high, weren't, weren't they? I mean.
Yes, they were. We were feeding 10,000 meals a day.
Okay, how have, have the numbers looked in the last, let's say, six weeks compared, comparatively to before, to prior?
Our meals right now, we are serving on an average of 5,200 meals. And that is an increase of over 4,000 meals from last summer at this time.
Okay, so my, I guess I'll be a little more clear. I'm sorry. So that my question is, have the meals that people have been coming to pick up from, let's say, starting in March, have they increased or have the numbers increased or decreased between now and then?
From now to, from then until now, they have decreased. But I'm going to say that there are a couple of things that I have put into those factors.
Okay, so I'm going to go ahead and just, this is my personal opinion. I feel it's entirely possible that there are a lot of families who are actually back to work. Communities have opened up, businesses are opened up, people are out there going back to work. And so it's entirely possible that there are parents who, and families who are out there not able to get to the sites for food. And the reason why I'm asking this question in correlation with that comment, I'm wondering what the district would be doing if we were to go to all virtual when we're looking at food security. Because we know that families will not probably, the numbers won't be the same. A lot of people are going back to work. They're not able to drive to get the meals. So I'm, I'm concerned, and this is one of the things I'm concerned about, is food insecurity for families who cannot get to the sites if we go to all virtual.
So there are a couple of things that we can learn from other districts that are doing right now. That it is, it is very, very important for us to still offer meals to our students while we are in school. And the, and what I say in school is any type of learning. And that means if they are even learning at home. Because there are families that, that we have families that are under the free and reduced meals. And we have to offer them a meal every day. So with that being said, we can have some challenges, but those challenges I'm not afraid of, afraid of doing. We have a contract with our buses. We can possibly look at doing something with our buses and with the routes that we go through and pick up. We pick ups, where we pick up students. There are local areas, there are going to be food service employees that are going to be working who want to stay whole that we can look at doing. We want to do whatever we can to feed these students and get them what they need.
I, I appreciate that. That is definitely something I'm thinking about quite a bit and, and just the, the reality of access once that happens and kids can't leave their homes to get there, you know, I'm, I'm thinking about just, even just kids having to walk outside of their home to get the food from someone. There might be parents who, who won't allow that. I just, I just, I'm, I'm really hoping that we dive really deep into this conversation and possibility. Thank you.
Yes, absolutely. You're welcome.
Any other questions for Lynette?
Andrew has his hand up.
Oh, sorry, Andrew. I can't see you. Just jump in.
Hi, I think yes, I am. So not that there's anything wrong or that it means if there's anything bad if, if board members have an, an addition or a suggestion with one of these plans, but I don't have any. I think, I, I just wanted to comment that it's, I'm very happy to hear, though not at all surprised to hear that more or less they're taking, Lynette, your, your model and your team's model. And then other places are going to just try to more or less copy our, our model the best that they can. I'm, I'm not at all surprised to see us being leaders in an area like this. And I'm, yeah, happy to, happy to have Noel. And you know, I'm not shy about questions, but I'm happy to have Noel questions because the couple of things I came in thinking, maybe I would do a double check on are, are all here. So thank you, Lynette.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Again, thanks to Pete and Chad and Lynette for their work in this area. Again, I'll emphasize that those are two of the areas that we're looking at right now. Josh, if you could forward the slide. Some of the other areas that we spent some considerable time on today and over the last two weeks. I'm going to touch on a couple of these as we move into the, the next slide on our timeline. But you can see on the second bullet there, the issue of masks for both staff and students. Considerations for what is physical distancing actually look like in our schools? And by that, we're talking about how many students can a classroom actually successfully contain during a class? What does it look like as you try to move students through hallways and have them in common spaces? We spent quite a bit of time working with local healthcare professionals on symptom screenings. We'll talk more about that as we move through this process. If you drop down to what I think it's the fifth or sixth bullet there, technology support for offsite learning. We had another follow up conversation on what does it look like to make sure that not only do students have access to technology if we're offsite, but how can they ensure that they have appropriate internet access so they can take advantage of resources? You heard several of these topics discussed tonight as we went through there. Many of them are interlinked. So if you look third up from the bottom, Lynette talked about what it might look like if we're feeding students somewhere other than the, the normal cafeteria space. And so then we have to think about what are cleaning protocols look like following breakfast and lunch service. And then during the regular day, what does, what do additional cleaning protocols look like to ensure that surfaces are safe for students? So again, just some of the things that we're working on right now. We'll have more information for you as we move forward on that. So when can you expect information? Josh, if you can move to the next slide? Thank you. So I, we've got a couple of key dates coming up here that we want you to consider. We're going through a process right now where we're seeking information from parents on offsite enrollment. And what we're doing is again, if you remember from our last conversation, we talked about having knowledge that we have students who will be medically unable to return to school this fall. Regardless of what modality we choose to provide instruction, they simply will be physically unable to return to school because of medical compromise issues that they or family members face. So we know that we'll be offering offsite enrollment to those students. We also know that we have parents who have legitimate concerns and fears and they're reluctant to return to the classroom. And we want to make sure that we understand the magnitude of both of these issues. And so we're reaching out to parents and we're going to be asking them if they prefer an offsite enrollment option. At this point in time, that's all we're asking. We're not asking about issues with onsite, nor are we asking about issues with blended options. We're simply trying to garner from them an idea about the scope of the number of children who will be seeking that offsite instructional opportunity this fall. That will help us significantly in our planning process. Also this week, we're working on gathering additional information from several parent focus groups. In particular, we're reaching out to some parents who may have some unique needs in our educational setting. We're working specifically to garner information from parents of students who participate in our special ed program. Also, parents who have students that participate in our English learner program. We're also reaching out to some general ed parent groups at the elementary and the secondary level to better understand some of their concerns. We'll be able to use that information again to inform our work as we move forward over the course of this weekend and the next. Let's see, on the 28th, we're reaching, reaching out to better understand student concerns. Those of you that follow the media this weekend, that appear to be the focus for several national media groups where they interview students from around the country to garner information from them about their thoughts about returning to school in the fall. We'll be looking for additional information from them. You can see we've got some additional parent focus groups that we've got planned for that, for that date. And then our intent is by the 31st or the end of the month, we will have our plan draft completed that we'll be able to share with you as a board. We'll be looking at all three modalities in that plan draft. What does it look like for offsite learning? What would it look like for onsite learning? And then what would it look like in a blended model? That'll allow us to come to you as a board on the 3rd and seek some affirmation for our planning processes moving forward and allow you as a board to make a decision about the plan that you think best fits the needs of our students and community. So again, some key dates coming up and some of the work that we're doing. And either I or members of the admin team at this point in time will be happy to answer additional questions for you on our work today and the work that's coming up.
All right, Andrew, would you like to go first?
Thank you. Yes, well, I, I appreciate the, the timeline. I appreciate us quickly rolling out. You know, having, asking that question, how many, how many people are going to prefer an all online option, which I think we, you know, need to widely offer and make sure that's, that's well known. What I, I guess I'm wondering, some people have talked about needing to know the answer, although I advise people against this because any district who says that they know now absolutely for sure what's going to happen, what's going to be happening, it cannot be telling that with accurate 100% actually, because we don't know where the cases will be at. But for those who do say, we want to know in time to make an enrollment decision, how does that, isn't, isn't the 3rd of August too late?
So the open enrollment timeline is August 1st. That's one of the reasons that we're pushing so hard to make sure that we're able to publish our plan on the 31st. As I said, we'll share our best thinking at that point in time with you as a board. We'll also be able to share with the community. I think at this point in time, one of the things that I can share with you, which I think will help parents from that decision making process is number one, for them to know that we will have an offsite plan available for parents who either need that or wish that for their students. So for those parents that have written to you and expressed a desire to be able to keep their students at home this fall, we can assure them that we will indeed have a plan available for them that will allow them to choose that option. And then I think the other thing we can reassure the parents on is that we're working diligently to make sure that when safe, we'll have an onsite option available for, for our students. At some point in time, regardless of where we start this fall, we know that kids are coming back. And so we will have plans in place to accept students back into the school, whether that's September 1st, the end of the first quarter, the end of the first semester. And so I think that for parents that are looking for any option out there, we'll be prepared to meet their needs. Again, we, our plan is to have the draft out in front of you on July 31st. We also plan to release that publicly so that people will be able to take a look at that. And yes, you're right, Andrew. While you as a board will vote on that until the 3rd. We hope that there's enough information provided there. The parents recognize that it's our intent to meet their needs regardless of where those lie on that spectrum of course offerings that they're looking for.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Steve? Go ahead, Rhonda.
Okay, thanks for the information. Is it possible that this information can be put out if people aren't watching the live stream? That they can actually access it through the agenda?
Actually, we're going to one up it on that. Yes, we indeed put it on the agenda. But right now, one of the things that Lori is working diligently on is how we can make sure that we communicate this information through the website for those people that are accessing the information there. So as we get this timeline further refined, we're going to have that out on the website. We anticipate that there'll be additional dates with additional key points that will come into that timeline. And as we continue to grow the detail in there, then people will be able to have access to that on a real time basis. So yeah, our intent is to push as much of this information out so that it's electronically available for everybody. And certainly the board agenda is one place. It might be easier for most people to look on the website. So we'll definitely house it there, but we can put it here too also, Rhonda.
I appreciate that. I would say as a board member, speaking for myself, it's a lot easier to prepare for a board meeting. It's actually in the agenda.
Yes, and.
If at all possible, on Friday.
And again, that, that's our, sorry about that. Yeah, that's our intentionality, especially for this plan, is to have this available on the 31st. We want to make sure that you as board members have an opportunity to review it. We also want the community to be able to review it. We recognize that you get lots of comments from community members. And we want to make sure that they have adequate time to review it and either share their thoughts with you individually as board members or with us as an administrative team. And so that we're able to get some of those questions asked and answered before we arrive at the board meeting on the 3rd.
So you are saying that in fact, we will be voting on this?
Yes.
On the 3rd?
We will bring it to you for vote on the 3rd.
Okay, can you walk through the open enrollment details as far as the plan comes out on the 31st? The board, it gets made public, the board votes on it on the 3rd. What does that look like in regards to, let's say I'm a, I'm a, I'm a parent guardian of the district, district student, and I'm not okay with what's going on? What does that look like if I need to open enroll into another district on August 4th? What does that look like if I need to open enroll into another district on August 4th?
So open enrollment is due in by August 1st. So again, what we're trying to do through this process is to assure those parents, and I know many have written to you, I've also received many inquiries from parents that are saying that they want to ensure that their students have the opportunity to stay home from a safety standpoint. So we want to reiterate today and make sure that people understand, and it's one of the reasons we're doing the the survey next week, that there is indeed an online offsite option available for parents. And then the other thing again, that we want to reassure parents today and moving forward, and I'm sure I'll have multiple opportunities to do that through our media outlets, is that we are planning for what onsite education would look like. As Andrew said, what it looks like, of course, the next 42 days. I certainly don't think I'm in a position to predict. But given that we are planning for it, if indeed it's safe to return to school, we will have a plan in place to do so.
Okay, thank you. But if I'm a parent who doesn't, I just can't make that all, let's say it's all virtual. Let's say on August 3rd, the board votes to go all virtual. And I'm a parent that is not, that's just not going to be realistic for me. What, what recourse do they have to open and roll into another district on August 3rd, 4th?
They don't. If, if they had a level of fear that we were going to go all virtual and that there was no alternative and they wanted to open and roll out of the district, they would have to do that before that. We know that we've gotten feedback from some folks who have said that absent a guarantee that we will place their children in the classroom, that they're going to open and roll. As I said, I can't guarantee that today because I don't know what the health and safety environment will look like on September 1st. And so I think that it's, it's responsible for us to prepare for both. And that's what we're doing and that's what we'll continue to communicate to parents.
Beth may want to jump into, but I do believe that the alternative apps for open enrollment in Wisconsin will be open and the parents would be able to apply through the alternative application process for open enrollment.
And when does that expire?
It never ends.
Correct. Maybe, and maybe a note to most of our surrounding schools aren't accepting open enrollment at this time because they're at capacity, but correct, the alternative application doesn't end.
So Rhonda, to your question, families would have an opportunity to apply for open enrollment through alternative apps. But as Beth notes, there's a number of school districts in the surrounding area, whether through the regular application process or the alternative application process, that they put their spaces at zero, so they would not be able to accept students from other districts through open enrollment, regardless of when families applied.
But that's, that, does that include private schools as well?
Private schools are not through the open enrollment process.
Right. I guess what my, my ask is, would there be options? Because I'm being asked this, right, probably daily. There would be options if for some reason the window is passed, the board votes in a direction that they're not willing to go, regardless of the direction. Are, are you saying that there doesn't seem to be any room in other districts at this time?
So if you recall, in January, school boards establish spaces for open enrollment.
Right.
You guys established spaces. So school districts that are closed for open enrollment, Howard Swampco has very limited spaces, West DePere, I believe, set their spaces at zero. DePere, I believe, set their spaces at zero for almost all their grades. That was all done pre-COVID, you can't go back and change your spaces. So once they're set, they're set. So regardless of whether families applied through the traditional open enrollment window, which the DPI and the state had extended, or whether they apply through that alternative app, and regardless of COVID or no COVID, they had already set their spaces. Families would be able to apply to school districts that do have spaces through that alternative application process, and that never closes. With respect to private schools, I don't know what their application process is, but families certainly could apply and check that out. We don't, we don't stand too frequent communication with the private schools regarding their application process.
Okay, thank you. So I have a few other questions. You said something, or you mentioned there would be some parent focus groups. Can you explain who the individuals, how were they determined, what parents would be part of those groups? How was that determined, or has it been determined?
That's something we're working on right now. I know that Lori's with us, if she's got the ability to just share some information about the work that we're doing with the folks on our leadership teams to develop some parent respondents for those focus groups that we agree.
Sure, I've been working with the Equity Work Group. And so we, our purpose in the focus groups was to try to really reach those families who maybe are often more disengaged from our schools and are not likely to be filling out the surveys. And so I've been working with them to determine the lists of people that will be being asked to be a part of it, as well as the executive directors worked with the principals to provide a list for their elementary families. So that's how we've come up with those lists.
Thank you. And you had mentioned that there had, there was a potential for a town hall discussion. Are there any details on that?
Sorry about that, I was on mute. Right now, at this time, due to the timing and the speed with which the work groups are processing information, we went with the focus groups rather than the town hall, just in order to try to get some specific information from some of those very are much narrower parent groups.
Okay. That, that's hard to hear, I'm just gonna be honest. Especially considering, I don't know how many parents you're, I'm grateful for the focus groups, but we have 21,000 students, I don't know how that, I don't know how that alone is equity. If that's the amount, if that's the sole amount of parents, family, community input that we have on this, informing this plan. I mean, how long do you think it would take to?
Well, first of all, it's not, Rhonda, it's not the only information that we've got. Lori, can, can you share numbers on how many people responded last week when we sought additional input?
Sure, so I mean, so originally, we had the original survey that went out in June. We have that feedback. There were thousands and thousands of comments, so it wasn't just what we had asked them, it was what feedback they provided us. So our work groups have all of that information. Then when we sent out the communication last week from Superintendent Merly, we had over 230 comments from parents, so the work groups also have that information to work with. As I shared with the group today, I would say a large percentage of those were families who are looking for the offsite opportunities. So I think the families who are most anxious about probably returning to school were the ones who were most likely to fill it out and share that information with us. But there were also family members who talked about concerns about being able to go to work and be able to have their kids in school. There were also families who were very interested in the hybrid model because they, they like sort of that middle ground. So the, again, that's all information that we've provided to the work groups to use as they, you know, as well as the questions that parents have asked, so that we can be answering all of those as we work through the plan.
And I appreciate that. But it is important to also, also consider that we do have, we have what is eight municipalities of taxpayers as well. I would love to see some sort of town hall forum, something. I, I just want to go on record saying I would love to see that. We have a lot of invested interests in the community. It is obviously families, students, and community members. I think a lot of people were actually expecting a town hall, it was noted. So I, again, disappointed we couldn't make that happen.
Definitely, we can take that back to the leadership team. Eric, go ahead, sorry.
No, I was just gonna, I know there's other people who have questions. So Rhonda, if you have a couple, we'll come back to you. Brenda, you had your hand up, so we'll go to you and then we'll go to Christina.
I don't really have a question, but I have a comment. And I, as I've been thinking about all of the incredible balls in the air and then the planning that has gone into this, I'm, I'm very grateful to the team that, that we haven't given in to the, the temptation to go all virtual. I know, you know, that's the safest way, but I, I really think that if we really are truly looking at equity for our students and our families, there are various levels of, of risk that people are willing to take. And, and I think we can bring kids back to schools safely with all the good, with all good precautions. I don't know that we can bring everybody back, obviously, but I think we do have the capacity to bring at least some of our kids back, those that really need in-person instruction, those whose families can't manage having their kids in all virtual because they're, of their work schedules and things like that. So I just want to express my thanks. I know that this triples and quadruples the work of everybody to have all of these different options out there. But I, but I, I think that it's, it's great that we're continuing to do that. And as Andrew said, on September 1st, we may have no option and somebody else has decided that our schools are closed, but we'll be ready for that too. So anyway, big huge thank you to everybody for just the continued work and effort that you're putting forth to try to provide all a variety of options, because our families have, have certainly expressed that they're not all on the same page in terms of what they're willing to select for their kids in the fall.
Christina, did you want to go next?
Sure, I don't know if this is too preliminary of a question to ask, but I'm curious if you have heard from any of the districts that have already committed to go on fully virtual, if they have any report out of how that has impacted their enrollment numbers for this school year? Or maybe it's too soon to, to ask that question. But I, I am, obviously, no matter what we do, it's going, people are going to feel strongly, but I'm just curious on how that impacts us for this school year.
Sure, and, and it's a good question. It's a bit preliminary only in that a couple of them that just announced, especially in the Big Five. So we do have a large district meeting scheduled where we're going to hear more about what their plans look like, better understand their intentionality to go all offsite and understand what the implications for that are. One of the things that we did add to the agenda was implications for those parents who would prefer to be onsite. And so I can definitely ask for more specific clarification from them on open enrollment issues that they might experience. So right now, just a reminder, if you didn't have a chance to see the, the letter from the five EAs representing the five large districts, their request is to go fully online. And Madison and Milwaukee have made that announcement, that that's their intention. And so Madison's just came, Milwaukee's was last week. So I think some of that information is likely to unfold here over the course of the next week.
Yeah, thank you, appreciate that.
Andrew?
Just, just to clarify, the, the request from the Education Association of the Big Five is to that joint letter is a request to be fully virtual if you can't have safe in-person instruction separately. Separately, I believe some individual associations petition their districts for a more direct thing for their district. The Big Five letter was requested to start virtual if we can't start safely, correct?
That is correct, yes. And, and I think you heard that echoed clearly in Justin's comments tonight. And I would just remind you that our EA has been incredibly helpful to us. Rhonda, rather, we talked about the, the big team and the work that they're doing. We made sure that right away, we reached out and asked for teacher participation. We recognize as the end users, they've got some very specific concerns about things that they will expect to see in their classrooms and in schools. And so they've been very forthright in their participation. They're certainly continuing, they're all in on this. Because Andrew, as you said, if things are safe, we want our kids back. And if they're not, then we want to be prepared for that.
Okay, EA is probably, I'm guessing it might be the kind of the universal acronym, but
Our Education Association.
It isn't here, probably, I would say, yeah, so.
Our Education Association, thank you.
No, do you have a question?
Yeah, thank you. It was detailed, I think I'll digest most of that at some point. I have a question, just what is kind of the plan to gather feedback from students?
So let's see, I think Lori's still on with us. And I, yeah, we are, our plan is to reach out and through the survey process to gather additional information. Lori, would you like to share a little bit more about that?
Sure, so starting tomorrow, students in from sixth grade through 12 will be getting an email in their Gmail account or their GBA PS account. And in there, there will be a link to a survey that will be requesting them to fill it out, giving us some feedback about their thoughts for the next school year and sort of what their needs are. And I believe they have until the 28th of July to fill that out. We'll also be communicating with parents so that parents are aware that students are getting that link, so that they can also encourage their child to fill out the survey.
All right, we appreciate your questions. Oh, I think Rhonda might have another one.
I do, I have a few more. How were non-union teachers, staff in general, made part of this conversation? Have they had any presence at all in these conversations, in these work groups?
I've had a great deal of individual dialogue with staff members, both of, both association members and non-association members. In this case, because of the speed that we needed to compile the teams and the rapidity with which we needed to get the work underway, from an efficiency standpoint, we reached out directly to the Green Bay Education Association to ask them to identify staff members in multiple categories, both support staff and teacher staff. And so that helped us accelerate the work of getting these committees together, as I've shared with some of the non-association members in email dialogue with them. Normal best practice would be to also go to our building administrators and ask them to nominate some non-members to be a part of that group. But because timing was of such the essence, we did not do that this time. And so one of the things that we are doing though is gathering information from teachers who are writing into us, and we are sharing that directly with the work groups so that they're able to take that into consideration.
Would you be able to share those directly with the board as well?
Emails that we're receiving?
Right, because as it stands right now, unless they reach out to me personally, I have no idea. Because they don't have the ability to come out and make a statement, right? So I don't know. And it's, and it's important for me to know that.
Absolutely, yeah.
Thank you.
We can definitely do that.
So I have a couple more questions. If, if the district, the school district goes to an all-virtual model, has there been considerations about tutoring options as far as accessibility to that? I know I've heard from parents who have said that if that in fact is the direction we go, are we interested, or is it possible to start thinking about any sort of partnerships with, with tutoring? Or would we be able to use our own staff in that capacity and how would that work? I'm really interested in being able to support families who don't have, you know, the where-for-all to, to find out, or the resources really to have that happen. So I'm, I'm hoping that that's also part of the consideration, that extra support as well.
Sure. And I, I don't see Nancy on the phone or on the call here, so I, perhaps I could turn to Vicky and she could share some of the conversation that's been taking place with the academics working group.
Yeah, Nancy is here, so she can jump in here. But Rhonda, one of the questions on the survey for the students that's going out tomorrow is asking about what kind of supports work best for you? Whether that means a tutor So a lot of our students, as we learned from the students that serve on this board, they said they woke up later in the day and did their schoolwork later, later at night. So we'd like to get a general idea on how many kids we're talking about there and what kind of support they might need. Here we go.
Oh, I can't.
I'm sorry. This happens all the time, I'm so sorry.
It's all good.
Nancy, do you want to add anything, please?
I was just going to add that tomorrow, in fact, I have information to provide to Vicki and Steve regarding our intervention data during the closure to take a deeper dive into, are we maximizing the use of our interventionists in meeting students' needs optimally? So yes, we are definitely looking at 24/7 service. That's something that we heard during our work behind the scenes to get summer school ready. So there's, there's a lot in motion, but nothing's finalized yet.
Thank you. I have one more question. And this is personally just my thought on this whole thing. If we are presented on the third with two options, which I'm assuming that's what it will be, and one of those options is an all-virtual model, I would really like to see how all staff will be utilized throughout that model. I'd like to see what that's going to look like as far as, as an operational budgetary lens, not necessarily for this year, but just in general to see how we were able to utilize staff if we in fact go to an all-virtual model. I'm, I'm very interested in that, may determine my vote. I'm hoping it would also determine other board members' votes, but I'm, I'm really interested to see how we would actually work that out.
That, that is a point that our, the folks working with our human talent area have been highly focused on. What roles are there for not just our teachers, but also what roles are there for our support staff? Some are easily identifiable, some not. If we wind up being forced back into a March 13 position, where are there opportunities for us to use the skills and abilities of the folks on our team while we're in that type of environment? So that has been a primary area of focus for that group. They've got some good creative ideas. I think you'll see that coming out as we move through this process.
Can I just add one more thing? Does the district have their own definition of its effective containment? I know it was mentioned in the GBEA statement, but I know what I asked last time, but is there any sort of feeling around what that actually might look like?
We are actually relying on Brown County Public Health and our, we've got multiple representatives from our area healthcare providers, Pervia, Bellon, and Bay Care who are working collectively with a larger group that includes superintendents and municipal leaders to help us better understand how to define those. So we are, we are leaving that, those operational definitions to the healthcare professionals.
Thank you.
Christina?
Good question. And you might have talked about this, I had to step out for a second, so I apologize. Just a quick update, or how are we connecting with the Special Education Council and parents and families specifically with this plan? I'm sure there's a long-winded answer, I'm just curious for a high level.
Sure. The short answer is that we've got a focus group with them and, and I am meeting with them in a separate meeting this Thursday. So we've got two opportunities to hear directly from both.
Sorry, I'll keep it quick. I would just ask that whatever final report does get released, there's detail on co-curriculars because that's what people keep asking me about is, well, if we're going to have reopen, how are you going to have to co-curriculars? Because, you know what I mean? So that kind of question. And I know that with, after March 13th, co-curriculars do keep some students there. It's just, that's just how it works, you know? Keeping them involved in that might be the only thing that actually gets them to come to school that day. And I know that that's really what kept people going. So if there is a reopening plan that doesn't adequately address that, my worry is attendance would be very strange and there would be minimal involvement, if that kind of makes sense. Because I definitely heard a lot from a lot of people that that happened in March. So that would be my request. Thank you.
That is a excellent observation, Noah. We know that we educate more than just students' minds, but we also educate their hearts. And that whole school experience is the in-classroom experience. We also call it the out-of-classroom experience or the out-of-school-time learning. And we actually have a whole work group that is focused on just that issue. So they're looking at everything from littles all the way up to high school students and considering what is life will look like for them outside the school day. And so that would include your academic, your fine arts, your athletic extracurriculars. So that is the only thing that that group is working on and that will definitely be a part of the plan when it comes out.
Thank you. So I was, I was only going to plug that it's International Chess Day today if, if it relevantly came up in the meeting, but since it, since it now has, one activity that actually has thrived when it had to move online is chess. And so that's certainly a place where I'll lend personal assistance to, to helping out if that's, you know, if that's an increased opportunity for folks next year or if we really with, you know, I mean, I'll do it even if, if things are, I mean, it'd be great if things are totally back to normal and then there might be some in-person ones too. But if it, if it can't be in-person, there's still plenty of competition for beginner through state championship level that can apply on, online. So.
Wonderful opportunity. Thanks for the offer.
All right.
Are there any other questions for Steve or his team? All right, Steve, I'll just echo the comments of lots of people.
I had one more. I'm sorry, I had one more, one more.
Go ahead.
I tried, I was muted, I tried to do it quickly, I'm sorry. I'll be quick. Because these are questions that I'm being asked from the public. Fees, school fees. If we go with a hybrid, all virtual regardless, the fees that students have paid or will pay will not apply. Is that fair? What will?
I know that was a topic in one of the work groups. I have not seen their output on that, but that will be part of that conversation when we get there.
Okay, thank you.
So just want to say thank you again, Steve, all of your team, everyone on the work groups who's putting in the, the time and energy. I know, you know, what I'm confident about in our district and that we haven't released a plan, maybe like some other districts have, but I'm confident that our plan will be better. Our plan will, will take into the, the concerns about all of our students and we know that this plan will impact everybody differently. And I appreciate all the due diligence because we, we could put something out that would just create more questions. And I feel like the work product that you and the team are working on, I'm confident that it's going to be really well thought out. So thank you. All right. Steve, you want to jump into this one or do you want me to take the, the next agenda item?
I can start with that and then we'll probably get some questions from folks. So I know one of the things that came up at the last board meeting was about, from a calendar perspective, on whether or not we continue to meet virtually or whether we consider onsite meetings in the future. And if so, when we move to that, the only thing that I have to offer on that right now is that in our regular weekly meetings with our Brown County team as a whole, Brown County is still considered in the high category when it comes to community spread and transmission. And given that, I think that one of the things that you should consider is how best to communicate with the public and how to allow them to access our meetings and how to ensure that you're able to safely participate in meetings. And so I think given that, that current status in Brown County, I would suggest that that should weigh heavily in your decision as to whether to continue to meet virtually or whether you should consider coming back in person.
So I don't, I don't think we, we need, are making a decision on, on that specifically today, something that we'll continue to talk about, but that's, your feelings echoed how I, what I feel about meeting in person. I've also, it should be noted that I've heard from more people that doing this kind of format allows for better participation on their end in terms of accessibility and participation. So I, I don't feel like we're in a rush to, to get back.
And the, the next piece I'd add is that we are working to schedule a retreat. I really appreciate all the board members' willingness to help us coordinate your calendars. As with any large group, we're struggling to find a date that works. We thank Beth for continuing to work hard to try to find that mutual date. You should have another opportunity to participate in one of those date surveys in your email inbox. And hopefully from that, we'll be able to find a date that's going to work with everyone. One thing I might suggest, normally retreats can be a little bit longer meetings, but given that it's highly likely at this stage in the game, we may find ourselves in a virtual environment, you may want to consider breaking this type of retreat down into separate meetings, perhaps do one in August and one in September, cover a little less ground at each one of them. I know Zoom meetings can be particularly taxing and I think that two shorter meetings might be more beneficial than one long one.
Can you, just a comment or consideration, can we just speak to their, because of the engagement, right, with these live streams, we probably have people listening that don't understand what a retreat is with the board. They might be thinking it's like a mani-pedi spa experience, or it's not that. But is there a way to just, I guess, can you explain what that actually entails?
Sure. One of the things that a retreat can do, which a regular board meeting doesn't, is give you the opportunity to some long-range planning to tee up for you as a board, for us as an administrative team, some of the big projects that you see coming in the next six to 12 months, to make sure that we get those calendared for work and for reporting out to the board. And I think it gives you as a board an opportunity to respond to the community with that long-range planning component. And again, it gives us as an administrative team an opportunity to manage expectations and make sure that we can get the work done that you need to meet your obligations as representatives of the community. Thank you for asking.
And can you clarify what that is as far as it's a public meeting, there is access for the public, will there be access for the public to, to watch something like, like that live stream? Will it be videotaped? Can you touch on that as well?
If we use this format for it, we could use exactly the same methodology that we use for the current board meeting format. So that would allow for both taped, delayed access and real-time access.
Thank you.
Anything else there with calendar? We're good. All right. So last thing under superintendent's update is the Leasing Cup of Joy. We've been talking about this for some time. The, the information is in Agenda Manager. Before we move into making that motion, I want to ask the board if they would have any interest in tabling this, maybe until potentially August 3rd or, or maybe the, the next date. And the only reason that I would suggest that, you know, I, I, the administration has done an amazing job with negotiating this contract. I, I think that it meets a lot of our needs, trying to think strategically long-term. But right now, without having a firm answer of, are we going to have onsite registration? Or when are we going to have onsite registration? Without being able to answer that question, I, I feel more comfortable taking this vote if I knew the answer to that. Again, I, I plan to support this because I, I, I think it meets a lot of needs. As I said, it fills a big equity bucket for me, but would feel a little bit better if I could at least answer, when is onsite registration going to begin? So up for discussion amongst the board, if we would like to vote on this tonight, we certainly can. And I'm just asking for any appetite if we would just push it back a couple of weeks. Go ahead, Christina.
Thank you, Eric. I agree with you. I think that some more information needs to be gathered just so we have a, a better sense of the plan for the 2021 school year. And I'd like to make a motion to, to table this vote for the Cup of Joy contract until at least the August 3rd board meeting. That would be my recommendation.
So you've been in motion?
Yep.
Second.
All right. So let's have some discussion on this. Go ahead, Brenda.
So I guess I'd ask Pete or Mike, does this cause any problems in delaying, delaying our vote with the work that you've been doing with Cup of Joy to establish this contract?
I can certainly step in, but if you have anything to offer.
I was trying to get to my unmute and all of a sudden the screen disappeared. You know, I'm not aware of any other suitors that the Cup of Joy does have. I think it's a matter of bargaining in good faith, which I, I think that we have. We're wearing out our welcome, I suppose, by delaying. It would be a little bit more challenging for us to get the property ready for central registration and greeting families, but we're here to do what the board wants us to do.
Pete, would you, maybe you can't answer this question, but would you anticipate having, regardless of the plan that comes out on the third, having onsite registration one way or the other? Or, and if you can't answer that, don't answer it, but I.
Well, what I would say is by newness of the district might preclude me from being able to answer most fully. However, having said that, it seems to me that your most fragile families would be in an onsite process regardless of, of what happens.
Okay. And that, that's the issue for me that makes this so valuable is that it, whether it be during a pandemic or after a pandemic, our, our most fragile families, as you put it, this is a tremendous resource for them in, in their introduction to our district. And so if the answer is yes, regardless of what that plan says, in-person or all-virtual or some blend, people will be registering in-person, then I'm, I'm inclined to support this tonight. Go ahead, Rhonda, and then Christina.
I'm not really sure who can answer this, but how many people, how many administrators are currently, or staff, teachers are currently in the district office building? Or how many have been there in the last several months?
I can share that I can't tell you numbers, but I can tell you that I, I'm there and there are not a lot of other people present. So to your comments at the last meeting about having a Plan B and being able to use other areas of the district, whether that's central office location or one of our schools, that's definitely something that, that we have talked about as a short-term option for us. And, and then maybe back to Pete's comments, you know, part of what we're doing is looking for some long-term solutions. So I think it's kind of a twofold process and it's my understanding that that's what originated this particular action prior to my arrival.
Thank you. So I also just wanted to address and hopefully have people consider the fact that we still have been working as a board, as a district, administrators have still been meeting. And we've been doing this virtually. So it is possible to free up space in that building. I'm, I'm assuming that even if we go to a hybrid model, that in the interest of safety, we probably won't be meeting in that building, right? The, I think of the floor where there's a lot of meeting rooms, there's, there seems to be a lot of space, unless I'm wrong, that will not be utilized in the building that we're already paying for, or the taxpayers are already paying for. So I'm hoping that we can think about when it comes to priorities. Think about when it comes to priorities. That we're not actually interested in investing in the past. That we're looking at the like. The real time investments that we have in front of us right now. I'm hoping that the priorities that are in front of us are in fact about equity and that means working with what we have. Which is what so many of our families are doing, which is what so many other businesses are doing right now today in this global health crisis. So looking at what's possible. And looking at what, you know, what we want and what we need versus what we can actually make happen. Is what I'm interested in. I did ask for a tour. Of both buildings and I would still like to have that if possible, whenever that's doable. I think it's important for every board member to actually get their eyes on a building if they're going to approve. Any sort of expenditure for it, especially if it's something you've never been in before. I'm just asking that as a a request, a hope. But looking at the priorities that we have in place. The amount of. Tax revenue that we know is not going to be coming in. In the future, it's going to be a paradigm shift. In public education. And if someone believes that's not true, I would be very open to hearing how it's not. I think we really need to be very strategic and smart about what our priorities look like and that we're investing in. People and not buildings. And that we actually get creative and work with the space that we have. And so I would absolutely. I'm a firm no on this period. It doesn't matter if we move it forward or not, but I. Am not supportive of this at all. I think we have better things to spend our money on.
Any other comments? Christina?
Yeah, I'll just say quickly, I mean, I think in theory, this is a great idea, right? A parent welcoming center that we could. In a in a normal year, we could bring people in, we could welcome them, it could be a nice space where. People, you know, would have all the services they need. To me, that's why I would like for this to just wait a few weeks. Because it's hard for me to conceptualize how this. How spending the money fits into the plan without knowing what it's going to look like. And I recognize that the plan could blow up at any moment and there could be a whole different plan. But I I just, I think it's such a difficult narrative right now for us, for me, I can only speak for me. To justify renting a building when we have so many buildings that are already sitting empty right now. And 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 when, you know, we know that there could be an increased cost of of, you know, preparing to bring kids, students and and staff back. So again, you know, if if it's the will of the board to vote on this tonight, I mean, I respect everyone's opinion, but I I just speaking for me personally. I I would like to see us be able to tie our vision for the for the school year to this so that it it sort of makes sense. That's where I am right now.
Other thoughts on. This, I guess, really the the motion on the table is to whether or not we take a vote on it tonight, or if we take a vote on it. At a future board meeting.
From my standpoint, Eric, I'm I'm comfortable voting today, but if there are board members that feel like they will be. Their decision will potentially change based on additional information they would have in two weeks. I don't see why we wouldn't wait. If Pete says it's not going to impact negatively the negotiations they've been doing.
Go ahead, Laura.
I'm going to need to take this vote. We've had months of discussion and I'm ready to go.
Rhonda?
Can I see a show of hands of any board members who have been in the Cup of Joy?
No. Have ever been in there before? Yeah, I've been in there before.
But I know, I mean, like in recently and just with consideration of using the building. Of acquiring it, adding it to the to the. You know, the expenditure list that we have. Anyone?
So Rhonda, I know for me personally, our administrative staff has been in there. They've looked at it. They've told me about it. I have, there's a lot of buildings in our district that I haven't been in. So for me, that's. Not as much of a priority.
But if you if you were, but I would hope if you were considering something. That was an investment. Even if it was another building you hadn't been in, if it is something that's actually in the table. That you would, because I think most of us. In our personal lives, if we were going to purchase something or put money towards something, we would take a look at it.
All right, so. Pete, the one thing that that you said to me that. You know, that that sort of changed my initial question is is that we see kids registering in person. And there I I have said this before, but. I've been at the district office and and we, it's not an issue of space. We have space where families can come down. And register that the issue is that that space is very institutional. And the families who register in person are our most fragile families. There are families. Who may be struggle, who don't speak English, maybe are struggling financially and and. You know, don't have the ability to register online and the experience that they get when they first come to our district is terrible. In my opinion, and it's not anyone's fault because of the safety and security measures that are in place in that building. I have personally have escorted families who've been lost in that facility, who've been looking for central registration. That experience is it hit me profoundly in the fact that we have the ability. To invest in our our district. I understand that we're in a pandemic, but that doesn't prevent us from also thinking strategically. We will not be in a pandemic forever. Eventually, we will be back and our families will be registering and the ability to, for incredibly reasonable costs. We're not talking about buying a building. We're we're leasing some space that's right next door. That could provide a better experience for our our families and create a more equitable experience. And so for that reason, and to Pete's comments that that we do anticipate families registering in person, I would be comfortable taking the vote tonight. Andrew?
Yeah, I I'm going to support delaying. I I think if there's. I just. I don't see a compelling reason that 10 10 days is is going to make a difference here and except, except if the time is truly an emergency. I'm just going to always err on the side of a little more, a little more time to make a decision. It seems it seems reasonable.
Go ahead, Rhonda.
So to touch on, I know you mentioned, it's been mentioned previously that we're not buying the building, but in fact, it's still. We're not making money off of acquiring that building, whether it's a lease, whether we're purchasing it. We are still taking tax dollars and we're putting it into a different area. When we have a lot of space that's available. We could be creative. We could reimagine the spaces we have. This is what so many companies. Are doing. This is what they're doing right now because they can't just go out and take other people's money. And 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 put it towards other buildings. They are doing that right now. And so it's important for us to consider that. We have space. I firmly believe we will not need the parking spaces.
Ever? Ever again?
Um, if we want to discuss. The future, I'm going to go ahead and say that I also firmly believe. That. We are, enrollment is already declining. It will look different in the future. We have already taken and consolidated enclosed schools. There are other conversations on the table about that. So we have to remember that we've already kind of preempted this with conversations about enrollment. We've talked about having to consolidate schools, buildings. We've already done these things. So what that tells me is. We don't have the luxury and the privilege. That anyone else doesn't have right now. We have a lot of needs that are need to be met. We have priorities that I sure hope trump this decision. I think it would be a big mistake. To collectively just decide to do this. I don't think it'll do us very good with the public's trust. Especially if we ever want to go to a referendum. I think we have to be very, very smart about things we want. And being creative with what we have. And it's also being somewhat tone deaf. With what most of our families are dealing with. Yes, I'm sure they would love to have a better experience. I truly believe. We can make that happen. With what we have. And I'm I'm really hoping. That people are thinking along those lines. And how they would explain it to someone.
Two scenarios I'd push back on there is, one, I could very easily imagine a situation where our enrollment increases. Our plan is going to do more for at risk families than any other district in this area. It's just a simple matter of fact. And it when other plans and other districts come out, if I was a family who who could benefit from those services, I would open enroll to Green Bay. So I could just as easily see our enrollment increasing as you're projecting it to decrease. But i- if you presented an option to me where we could spend. I believe in our total budget and what this investment would cost, it's about point zero 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 one six. I might have included an extra zero in there, but it it's less than a thousandth of a percent. In order to provide a better experience for our. Most needy families, the families who are most likely to use this parent welcoming center. I'm going to spend that money seven days a week because it 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 provides a more equitable experience and that's a priority for me.
And I would argue that we're not a hospitality business. We're an educational system who needs to provide social safety nets for families. Who who will absolutely benefit from that. I don't know what you quoted point zero zero something, but in the grand scheme of things. We are interested in purchasing that building and that's a fact. And if we hide from that. I'll I'll get in trouble to say that. I don't even care at this point. We are interested in that and that is exactly what the goal is. And so if we're going to, again. We have empty spaces, right? We have them. That's a fact. Based on previous conversations that we've had, we've been doing this, having this conversation forever of how to handle that. I truly believe that we can take the space that we have because whether you have. A hybrid model or a virtual model. In the next year. That will absolutely shift. The models and the and and the institution and the structures in our district. And I truly believe. That those those areas in that district office that won't be utilized because we can actually have virtual meetings. We know these things now, right? WPS is closing an entire building. Because they know they have alternatives. So they can use maybe space for a different reason. I mean, the smartest thing we can do. Is yes, provide something for families. With the space we have, because then that is extra money. That we have when we know that tax revenue shortfalls are coming in and and it's not going to be pretty. When we know that state funding, because so many people are on unemployment and will continue to be. We can't look for the cash cow anymore. We have to look at what we have. And we have to work with what we have. And take that money because again, if we're not spending it. On direct. Services for teaching and learning. That's that's a misstep and it's out of touch and I just. It's it's just frightening.
We spend a lot of money that don't go to teaching and learning. We just heard this whole thing on on food equity and 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 things that we're spending to. To better meet the needs of kids. We, like it or not, public schools are a social, you you said it yourself. We we're a social network. We catch a lot of things that are outside of teaching and learning. And to me, that's where where this is a priority. Laura, I'm going to go to you.
And I'm going to respond to that first.
I'm going to call the question on the table, please.
I'd love to respond to that first. Please let me respond.
I called the question. Um, so I'll respond after Laura, please. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. So the question or the motion on the table was made by Christina, seconded by Rhonda to delay this vote. On the Cup of Joy to a future board meeting.
Point of order, the calling the question is a motion to end debate, so.
Oh, that's right, that's right.
Vote to end debate. On the post form.
Thank you, thank you, Andrew. So is there a second to Laura's called question? Do we need a second? Yeah.
Second.
Okay, now we can go. Thanks, Andrew. Beth?
So just, Beth, can you just, or somebody just clarify exactly what we're voting on now, in case anyone's confused?
Yeah, so right, right now, we're, the call to question means that we're going to stop discussion on whether or not we delay it. So you're you're voting right now if we should stop the discussion and then we would vote again on. The motion, the first motion.
The one I made.
Yes, so right now it's, yep.
So now it's to stop discussion?
Yes. Okay, Beth.
Okay, Smith?
Hi.
Warren?
Hi.
And then Hoover?
Hi.
Sidney Cow?
No.
Becker?
No.
McCoy?
Hi.
Shelton?
No.
Okay, so that takes us back to our original motion and that was to delay. The the vote to a future board meeting. And it was made by Christina, seconded by Rhonda. So Beth?
But discussion isn't over because that didn't pass because it has to be two thirds to end debate. So so the post form is still open for discussion because it was only four to three, which is not two thirds.
Perfect. Thank you for that clarification. Okay. Any other comments? Go ahead, Rhonda.
Thank you. We don't even know. What the next steps will be when it comes to. Back to school, return to school in the fall. We we are aware that regardless if it's a hybrid model. Or all virtual. That we will. Have more needs. When we talk about social safety nets, you better believe I agree with you. And that is the exact reason. Why I absolutely am floored and cannot believe we would even consider this because I do believe, and if I'm wrong. Share with me how I am. We will have more significant needs. Regardless of the model, actually frankly, because of what happened in the spring, we will have more significant needs. Where we need to spend every dollar, every dime, every ounce of our resources. Into supporting students. Once they're in the system. I think it's a misstep to not consider that and to and to look at that. Just as a. A balance sheet budgetary issue. We will not need parking spaces. We will not need that space. We have that. So I'm. Looking at. What we're not spending money on. If we. Take a building, because we know it's not just the the $4,000, right? We're we're not talking about that right now. It's the it's the money monthly. It's, there is a build out. It was smaller, it was noted, but there is a build out that's necessary. There are other. Expenses that go along with that. And every dollar that we don't take and put towards. Actually supporting the students in the system. Then we have to be able to say we were okay with that. We have reasons because we wanted them to have a place to come register. We have a place. We have multiple places. Reimagine, be creative, all the things that we tell our students to do every day, be innovative, work at it in that context. We have the space. We won't need the parking. We have the space. We won't need the parking. Our budgets are not going to look like they do. It's easy for us to say all this because we have a budget that's allocated for the next year. That is not going to be the case. So we have to be smart, like everyone else is doing, and take care of our, take care of our most marginalized, vulnerable, needy populations of our district. And that means all of that money goes towards tutors for them, food delivery for them, maybe extra counselors, social workers, anything that we can think about. I can name 15 things that will work out better than a nice place to walk into to sign papers. So that, that's my final statement. Thank you.
All right. Any questions? Any other comments? All right, then we'll throw it to Beth for vote. And just as a reminder, the vote here is to table the final vote on cup of joy until a future board meeting.
Okay. McCoy?
No.
Shelton?
Yes.
Becker?
Hi.
Smith?
Yes.
Sidney Cow?
Yes.
Warren?
No.
Brandon Hoover?
No. Uh, so the motion passed four to three. We will push this off to a future board meeting. Christina and I will work with Superintendent Merely to discuss when we might do that. All right, Superintendent Merely does that? Oh, sorry. Go ahead, Brenda.
I guess my, my preference on when we do that would be to have a special board meeting and vote on the third. And that's in response to Pete's concern that we're, we're trying to negotiate this in good faith. And I don't want to delay it another month.
Sure. And we'll, we'll have to have a special board meeting anyway to approve the reopening plan. So both of those things would be on there if that's.
I, yeah, I agree with you, Brenda. I think that's a good idea. Thank you.
Okay. Steve, is that the end of your update?
It is the end of my update.
Great, thank you. All right. So that brings us to number eight on the agenda, the intercity student council report. And I don't know if that's going to be facilitated by Luke and/or Noah. So I'll throw it over to you guys.
All right, um, obviously for summers, there's not too much to report. So I'll just kind of do this pretty fast. Graduations obviously happen, big day for a lot of our students. And other than that, we're kind of all just waiting to see how the school year plays out. And we know that you guys all have huge decisions to make over the next coming weeks and the past weeks that you've already made. And I, I'm sure that you guys will do the best job that you can. I don't know if Noah wants to add anything. No, all right. And I also want to say goodbye because this is probably one of my last, if not my last meeting. And you guys have given me an amazing opportunity and I'm so thankful and I'm so excited to see the next president. It was their thing next year.
Thanks a lot, Luke. We, I know, uh, we really appreciate your engagement and your time here. And go on to do great things to represent our district well. That's, that's how you make us most proud.
Will do. Thank you, guys.
Thanks, Luke. All right, um, if there's nothing else there, we will move to the legislative liaison report. And that'll be facilitated by Brenda Warren.
Um, I have a couple of things that I wanted to cover. Let me just pull up my report here. The first one is under school finance. And I know that most of you are probably aware of the, Betsy DeVos put in an interim final rule on the CARES Act and how that can be spent. There's, and, and she's wanting to disperse more of the CARES Act money to private schools, basically. Originally, it was intended that that money would go in proportion to the Title I students in the school. But she wants it to be dispersed to, to all schools. And you can comment on the bill before July 31st. I was going to do that on behalf of the board. If everybody is okay with that. That's a 30-day standard comment period for, for these kinds of things. Um, Christina?
Brenda, if you do that, I would be happy to have you do that first, but could you just share with us before you submitted it? Just, I'd just like to see it before you submit it.
Okay.
If possible.
Yeah. And I'm planning to use the, um, WASB has a template, as does the superintendent's, National Superintendents Association, the AASA. I'm planning to go along with, I won't do the whole thing, but that's the guidance that I'm using to make those comments. But I'll, I'll send that. Um, and then, uh, funding status, as you probably also are aware, today started the deliberations on a new funding package. And basically, the, some of the contentions between the Republicans and the Democrats will, is, uh, whether the money will be contingent upon having kids in school buildings. There's some question Mitch McConnell's looking to shield districts from potential lawsuits. And I know that the National Association of School Boards and also the AASA, the superintendent's organization, they have submitted a letter in support of that. Obviously, with, with just the uncertainty and, and risks and things, if, if there's no protection for good faith efforts and people that are following the guidelines, no protection for them against lawsuits, it will create a, a problem. And at, at this point, the discussion about that is if there's gross negligence, obviously, you know, you're not protected from that kind of thing. And then, uh, um, let's see, and then there's, there's some, some question about will there be trade-offs between funding for private schools, public schools? The GOP at this point is proposing to fund K-12 education between 50 and 100 billion dollars. And, uh, let's see, and then, um, the spending bill will also be mixed in with priorities like healthcare assistance, unemployment insurance. And then another round of stimulus checks are all things that are floating around in this negotiation. They have, they're under a tight timeline. The deadline for them, they say, is three weeks. So we'll see how, how that moves forward. And then lastly, I attached a list of webinar opportunities. Some of them have happened, but all of the ones that are on that list are recorded and can be found on the, on the website. I just wanted to, um, and I know, uh, I've been to a couple of the DOJ's. I know Laura was at one of them today. The Title IX presentation, I haven't seen yet, but that you can get off of the WASB, um, uh, website. And then there's, um, the Wisconsin Public Education Network Summer Summit. And I didn't attach the agenda because it's quite large, because they're having a lot of breakout groups and, and things like that. But that covers a tremendous number of, of different topics, a lot of topics on equity. And, um, COVID and, um, just nutrition, you know, lesson designs, charters, it's a, um, a large agenda. So if you're interested in that, Beth can register you. I think you probably can still register. I think it costs about $41 and, and change for the, for the day and, and it's all virtual. So if, um, that's all I have. If anybody has any questions, I'd be glad to entertain those. Seeing none, then that concludes my report, Eric.
All right. Thanks, Brenda. Well, that brings us to number 10 on the agenda, which is the teaching and learning discussion. And that happens to be facilitated by Brenda Warren.
Let's see, hold up the agenda. All right, um, we're, the, the things we're voting on tonight, we're all discussed in our last, our session meeting last week. So the first one, I would move that the deferral of the fall academic eligibility grade requirements as, or, um, oh yeah, that the deferral of the fall academic eligibility grade requirements as presented be approved. And those are grade requirements for participating in co-curricular sports or co-curricular activities.
My second.
Uh, Beth?
Hi.
Uh, Becker?
Hi.
Sidney Cow?
Hi.
Brandon Hoover?
Hi.
Shelton?
Hi.
Warren?
Hi.
And McCoy?
Hi.
Pass seven, zero.
And then under student academic standards, I move that pursuant to Wisconsin statute section 120.1213B, the list and description of the 2021 student academic standards in the areas of mathematics, science, reading and writing, geography and history as presented and with said academic standards constituting the board adopted standards that are required under Wisconsin statute section 118.301G A. Be approved.
My second.
Shelton?
Hi.
Smith?
Hi.
Warren?
Hi.
Brandon Hoover?
Hi.
Sidney Cow?
Hi.
McCoy?
Hi.
And Becker?
Hi.
Pass seven, zero.
Next, I move that the field trip policy 352 and rule 352 are, as presented, be approved.
My second.
Go ahead, Beth.
McCoy?
Hi.
Brandon Hoover?
Hi.
Becker?
Hi.
Warren?
Hi.
Smith?
Hi.
Sidney Cow?
Hi.
Shelton?
Hi.
Pass seven, zero.
And lastly, I move that the Head Start Program State Supplement Grant for $113,883 as presented be approved.
My second.
Beth?
Sidney Cow?
Hi.
Smith?
Hi.
Warren?
Hi.
McCoy?
Hi.
Brandon Hoover?
Hi.
Shelton?
Hi.
Becker?
Hi.
Pass seven, zero.
And that concludes my report.
Thank you very much, Brenda. With that said, we will move to number 11, organizational support, and that will be facilitated by Andrew Becker.
All right, I will move the college and career readiness coordinator job description as presented be approved.
Second.
Beth?
Sidney Cow?
Hi.
Smith?
Hi.
Warren?
Hi.
McCoy?
Hi.
Brandon Hoover?
Hi.
Shelton?
Hi.
Becker?
Hi.
Pass seven, zero.
I moved that the employment of Frank Angel as the district investigator, 12 months at the district office, a salary of $72,001 contingent upon pre-employment requirements as presented be approved.
Second.
Uh, Rhonda has a question.
Um, thanks. So can you, can we have a point of clarification? I've had people reach out and ask, um, who is the district investigator investigating? Just a brief synopsis of what this is. There are people that are late to the game. I know we talked about the, the position itself several months ago, but could you just touch on what, what this is?
Eric, can you help on that, please?
Sure, I can. The investigator will be helping with Title IX and Title VII investigations. Um, the new rules can be explained by Melissa Thiel-Coller around the Title IX. Regulations probably better than I can, but in particular, it's important that we separate the investigator and the fact finding from the individuals that are involved in the corrective and supportive measures that are put in place as a result of the process. So it really is to protect student rights and staff rights as we work through the process.
I saw Laura first, oh, and then Christina.
Uh, Terry, or maybe Melissa could answer this. We had a lot of discussion around this a few months back. Um, and at that time, some of the things that were being anticipated, and that's why we were going to be, um, why this new, new position was being offered. Uh, have those basically come to pass? I, I, there was some kind of, I mean, in my opinion, adverse, um, demands from the federal government that were putting a burden on school districts. And I just wanted to know if that has actually happened now.
Yes, they are, that has passed and the, uh, that was provided to the board, the information was accurate. And the, um, the pieces that we discussed at that meeting did go through and are going to be, um, it is a, a lot of different, it, it's going to change a lot of our processes and our procedures in order to meet those new guidelines and regulations.
If I can just add, Laura, the Title IX regulations were issued on May 19th and they will go into effect August 14th. We'll be coming to the board at the August 3rd meeting with a completely comprehensive redo of our Title IX Board of Education policies to be compliant with those new regulations. And as we predicted, it is going to be necessary to separate out the investigations from the decision-making and the review in that process, which is necessitating an investigator.
Oh, um, just to reiterate around the discussion we had at that time, this position is not there to investigate staff.
This position will be investigating, um,
Not punitively.
Not, not punitively, no. So, um, as you know, there are allegations made against staff by students and by other coworkers based on legally protected rights. And this investigator will be providing due process to the staff members who are accused in those allegations. And following the district practices and making sure that a fair and impartial investigation is conducted, looking into those allegations.
But also on behalf of students?
On behalf of students, on behalf of parents, on behalf of community members, on behalf of coworkers. We are not surveilling anyone. We're not actively looking for things to look into. These are complaints that come forward to the district that we're legally obligated to pursue.
Thank you. I just wanted a little overview, a reminder of kind of what, where we are.
Yep, and the, if I can just add the, uh, we, we did have employee representation and union representation on the interviews in the investigator, as well as board representation in the interviews.
Go ahead, Christina.
I, I, Terry, I meant to email this question to you earlier, and I hope it's okay to ask. And Melissa, you can tell me to shut up if it's not, or to be, to not ask this question. But I know we had talked about perhaps changing the title of it to remove the word investigator. Is that something, where, where do we stand on that? Because I see that word's still there. And can you just give a little bit of language and background to that?
Yes, we're open to that conversation that needs to go through the board process. That was a job description that the board had previously approved, as Laura had referenced in the previous conversations. And I think the intent was to be fully transparent and, and really clear with the title and, and the job description. I know as part of the process, and we did go through a very thorough selection process and was very pleased with the quality of our applicants. We had a number of applicants that were well-qualified. That through that process, we even received some input on some potential considerations for change that will need to go again through the board and that could be considered. We did not want to delay the process for the individual and the candidate in order to do the title review and change. But that is something that we could do through that job description process.
Thanks, Terry.
Christina, I agree with your suggestion. Christina, I agree with your suggestion. I think that's a great idea to change that name.
Yeah, thanks, Laura. No, and that's why I asked it because to your point, I think when when we were entered, when we were having the discussion, it was how do we ensure clarity of what the purpose of this is and that it's not punitive? So but thanks for bringing up that context. Thanks, Terry.
Andrew, oh, sorry, yes, Noah, do you have a comment?
Very quick, are will this position have any role? I tried looking for documents. I couldn't find it. In investigating student expulsions or doing expulsion hearings?
Not specifically, no. In fact, no, we have to keep separate the disciplinary process and the Title IX process. So this will provide that separation.
Thank you.
Andrew, and then.
So I'm I'm a little confused because. So. How is the how is the? I understand how it's separate, how the decision making is separate. But how how is it not? I mean, if if this person finds that someone committed a Title IX. Violation, then they are part of the. What? So what am I missing?
They can't, they cannot make, the investigator cannot make findings. The investigator conducts the investigation and turns over. The information learned in the course of the investigation. But any legal conclusions as to Title IX violations will need to be made by another individual. And then the. Process will then play out with respect to. Supportive measures. They will present the facts. And the information that they learn through the process and doing their due diligence and affording everyone their due process rights. And then that will be turned over.
Okay, I understand. Thank you.
Brenda?
And who evaluates? This individual? Can you?
That will be me, the individual will report to me personally.
Okay. Thank you.
And I'll be working collaboratively, obviously, with Ellen, Melissa, the Human Resources Director, Randy Etten. We're all very involved in that. The process is in the different types of scenarios where this individual might be involved.
All right, if there are any other comments, Beth, if you would. Take the vote.
Sounds great. Sit Nakow?
No.
Smith?
Yes.
Warren?
Aye.
McCoy?
Aye.
Banden Hoover?
Aye.
Shelton?
Aye.
And Becker?
Aye.
Pass six to one.
I will move the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Beth?
Becker?
Aye.
McCoy?
Aye.
Shelton?
Aye.
Banden Hoover?
Aye.
Warren? Smith?
Aye.
Sit Nakow?
Aye.
Pass seven zero. Thank you for that, Andrew. Moving on to the last couple of things here, future agenda items. We obviously have a few that we've discussed. Laura, would you like to share?
Um, yes, I. Not sure. This is kind of a delicate request. But we've had some recent. Threatening behavior towards some of our colleagues on the board. And I it made me wonder what exactly we could maybe do and what other districts do that could. Be more protective of our board members. I'd be interested to know, like, if the city council here in Green Bay doesn't need anything that helps. It's just disturbing and I'd like to know if maybe we should explore some steps. That would. Protect our our colleagues.
Okay. We'll talk, Christina and I will talk to Steve about that at our meeting this week. Was there someone else who had an agenda item?
I will.
Ron, go ahead, Rhonda.
Thank you. I'm interested in having a conversation and revisiting our commitment to public access. To our board business engagement, public access, especially considering we have a new superintendent. We're entering a very interesting. Realm of of public education and community experiences. And I'm looking to see if we could. Just touch base again on what we feel. Is true engagement and access to our board business. And when it comes to to Zoom meetings, virtual meetings. Just a conversation around that, a public conversation around that. Thank you.
Anything else? All right, with that said, our. Board meetings in August, August 3. It's listed as a work session right now. Obviously, there'll be a special section session first. Where we will get the reopening plan. We'll obviously have it before that. And so that's on August 3 and then the regular board meeting is on August 17. Unless anyone has anything else. I would look for a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Third.
Smith?
Aye.
Warren?
Aye.
Banden Hoover?
Aye.
Sit Nakow?
Aye.
Becker?
Aye.
McCoy?
Aye.
Shelton?
Aye.
All right, pass seven zero. That concludes our regular board meeting. Have a great night, everybody.
Bye, everybody.
Bye, guys.
Bye.
You have been watching the Green Bay area public school districts Board of Education meeting. Please visit the school districts website. www.gbaps.org to view the program again. If you cannot fully access the information on this video, please let us know the accessibility issue you are having by calling 920-448-2025. Or by email at communications@gbaps.org. We will try to provide the information to you in an alternative format and or make the necessary improvements to make the information accessible.